Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this afternoon's Stratford City Council meeting. We'll begin this afternoon's meeting with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Before we begin, and I turn it over to the clerk, I'm going to turn it over to the Chief Administrative Officer to make an introduction, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, your worship. It is my pleasure to welcome Carmen Kruger, Acting Director of Corporate Services to the City of Stratford and the CLT team. Carmen has extensive municipal experience and budget experience. And on behalf of CLT, we are looking forward to working with Carmen. So, welcome, Carmen.
Carmen, thank you so much, Joan. I'll turn it over to the clerk now. It's Devoe.
For your worship, item two, are there any declarations of pecuniary interests?
Seeing none.
Item three is adoption of the minutes, and there is a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting dated August 23rd and the special meeting dated August 30th be adopted as printed.
Moved by Counselor Vazalakos and seconded by Counselor Burbak. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry it.
Item four is adoption of the addenda, new agenda, and just prior to today's meeting, an addenda was circulated. And there is a motion that the addenda to the regular agenda of council and standing committee dated September 13th to add a consent agenda item and receipt of additional correspondence to the playing and heritage committee agenda be added.
By Counselor Clifford, seconded by Counselor Henderson, that the addend to be adopted. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry it.
Item five is reported, the committee of the whole in camera session, and item 5.1, at the August 30th session under the Municipal Act as amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered, and that was 4.1 recruitment for corporate leadership team position under the personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal employees or local board employees. And there is a motion that Carmen Kruger be appointed as the Acting Director of Corporate Services and Treasurer for the Corporation of the City of Stratford pursuant to section 286.1 of Municipal Act as amended and its Ontario regulations and any other act or regulation effective September 13th, 2021.
Counselor Gaffney moving, seconded by Counselor Burbak. Discussion. Carmen, on behalf of council, we want to welcome you and look forward to working with you over the coming weeks, months, and years. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry it. Thank you.
Item 5.2, at the September 8th session under the Municipal Act as amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered, and that was item 3.1, the good governance, education, and training session. And as noted on the agenda, a meeting of a council or local board or of a committee of either of them may be close to public, but the following conditions are both satisfied. One, the meeting is held for the purpose of educating or training the members, and two, at the meeting, no member discusses or otherwise deals with any matter in a way that materially advances the business or decision-making of the council. And as the purpose of the in-camera session was to provide education and training, no direction was given. Moving to item 5.3, just prior to today's council meeting, a committee of the whole in camera session was held to consider matters relating to the following items. So, item 4.1, purchase of service agreement, which was considered under advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. Item 4.2, festival hydro corporate leadership team update under the personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal employees or local board employees. Item 5.1 was appointment to the Stratford Town and Gown Advisory Committee, and item 5.2 was appointment to the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee. And both of those matters were also considered under the personal matters about identifiable individuals. And at the in-camera session, direction was given on items 4.1, 5.1, and 5.2.
Thank you.
Moving to item six, hearings of deputations and presentations, there are none scheduled, so move to item seven, orders of the day. And item 7.1 is a proclamation for rail safety week, and there is a motion that Stratford City Council hereby proclaim week of September 20th to 26th, 2021 as rail safety week in the city of Stratford to raise awareness, save lives, and prevent injuries.
By Counselor Bunting, seconded by Counselor Burbak. Discussion. All in favor? Let's carry it. Thank you.
Item 7.2 is correspondence regarding a resignation from the accessory advisory committee, and there is a motion that the resignation of Susan Lavender as an agency representative of the accessory advisory committee be accepted.
Counselor Anderson moving, seconded by Counselor Vazalakos. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry it.
Item 7.3 is a resolution for the supply and deliver of one new compact wheel loader. And there is a staff recommendation that city council award tender 2021-41 for the supply and delivery of a compact ALT 950 GEHL wheel loader to connect equipment at a cost of $150,930.26, including HST, to improve fleet equipment effectiveness and service levels, both in the winter and summer operation.
Thank you, Counselor Vazalakos and Counselor Ritzman moving and seconding. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry it.
Item 7.4 is a resolution for the Romeo Street Underpass retaining wall repair. And there is a staff recommendation that council award tender T-2021-47 for the Romeo Street Underpass retaining wall repair contract to across Canada Construction at a total tender price of $146,207.88, including HST, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the necessary contract agreement.
Moved by Counselor Burbak, seconded by Counselor Vazalakos. Discussion. Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, I was just going to ask the director, have we had any, any experience across Canada Construction? Because their price was under the other ones considerably, and the high ones way out. Have we had any, any experience with this company?
Yeah, through your worship, we did also have the same question. We reached up to their references. There was three of those provided, and they received positive references from, from them.
Anything further? If not, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry it. Thank you.
Item 7.4, 7.5 is a resolution to request to change the name of the Stratford City Centre Business Improvement Area. And there is a staff recommendation that the request from the Stratford City Centre BIA Board of Management to change the name of the board to Board of Management of the Downtown Stratford Business Improvement Area, BIA be approved. And that by law 66-83 as amended and by law 178-2018 as amended be further amended to reflect the name change.
Moved by Counselor Burbak, seconded by Counselor Henderson. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry it.
Item 7.6 is a resolution for the transfer payment agreement under the municipal modernization program intake to review stream. And there is a staff recommendation that council authorize the mayor, city clerk, and chief administrative officer or their respective delegates to execute the transfer payment agreement and other necessary documentation slash reports to the Ontario Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing as required for the purpose of conducting a business process review for city facilities with funding from municipal modernization program intake two.
Counselor Gaffney moving, seconded by Counselor Clifford. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry it.
Item 7.7 is a resolution, and it's a request to allow for a minor variance application for Countryside Development Incorporated. And there is a staff recommendation that the Countryside Development Incorporated be permitted to submit a minor variance application to the Committee of Adjustment for the lands located within draft plan of subdivision 31T18-003. And I will note that Dave Hannah is available to answer any questions of council.
Thank you. Is there a mover for that? Counselor Vazalakos is seconded. Counselor Henderson. Discussion. Counselor Henderson.
So basically, my understanding of this, and I want to make sure I'm clear on it, is that they just want to have it increased from 40 to 45% so that people can have patios, et cetera, added on to their house? If they so desire when they're building.
Through your worship to Counselor Henderson, that's correct. My understanding is that the minor variance application they would be making would be to increase the lot coverage. And that's to reflect some changes they're seeing in building trends with respect to covered decks.
All right, anything further? It's been moved. Oh, Counselor Seven and Counselor Burbak.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, so we're just giving, we're permitting them to submit an application. Is that actually something that we could decline?
Ms. Bridge.
Through your worship to Counselor Seven, so the Planning Act requires council to pass a resolution to allow a minor variance application where there's been a zoning bylaw amendment approved within the last two years. So you are correct, council could choose to not allow that minor variance application to be made. However, they could make that application after February 2022, when the two-year period has expired.
Thank you for clarifying.
All right. Counselor Burbak.
Thank you. Yeah, my question has to do with density. I'm wondering if this is going to change the number of units and therefore affect the density level of this project.
Through your worship to Counselor Burbak, no proposed changes in the density. All this would allow to do, all this minor variance would be allowed, would be allowed them to build additional structures on the building, so increasing the maximum lot coverage, no additional units would be permitted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry it.
Item eight is business where previous notice has been given, and there's none scheduled. So moving to item nine, report standing city. Item 9.1 is the report of the Community Services Committee, and there's one item listed for consideration as follows. That's item 9.1.1, investing in Canada Infrastructure Program Transit Funding Update.
Remember for that, Counselor Clifford is seconded. Counselor Burbak. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry it.
Item 10 is notice of intent, and item 10.1 is notice of public meeting under the Planning Act. And Stratford City Council will hold a public meeting on Thursday, September 30th at 6:00 p.m. to hear all interested persons with respect to the following planning application. The first being zone change application Z10-21 for 3202 Vivian Line 37. And the second being official plan amendment OPA 03-21, and zone change application Z11-21 for 30 Teansland Road.
Thank you.
Item 11 is reading of the bylaws, and there are six bylaws listed for consideration as follows. Item 11.1 is acceptance of tender for a compact wheel loader. Item 11.2 is to appoint an acting director of corporate services and treasurer. Item 11.3 is the transfer payment agreement for funding under the municipal modernization program intake two. Item 11.4 is to change name of the Board of Management of the Stratford City Centre Business Improvement Area. Item 11.5 is to amend the appointments by law to change the name of the Stratford City Centre Business Improvement Area. Item 11.6 is to authorize acceptance of the Romeo Street Underpass retaining wall report contract. And these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council president.
A mover that would be taken collectively? Counselor Bunting and Burbak seconding. Thank you. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously, so we'll go to first and second reading of bylaws 11, 1 through 6. Counselor Henderson, Counselor Vazalakos moving and seconding. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry it. Third and final reading. Counselor Seven and Counselor Ritzman moving for bylaws 11, 1 through 6 to pass third and final reading. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry it.
Item 12, the consent agenda. Are there any items listed on the consent agenda to be considered by council, including the added item CA-2021-120?
Seeing no hands.
Item 13 is new business. Are there any new business items?
Counselor Ritzman.
Yes, if I may, through, through your worship, I would like to congratulate Director Cranklaw and his team on a very successful resurfacing project on Romeo Street. Certainly well organized, and they did an amazing job. The contract agents of keeping traffic flowing. So congratulations, a big project, but well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ritzman. Anything further? All right, I'll take the opportunity to ask for a motion to adjourn, to reconvene in committee. Counselor Burbak and Counselor Vazalakos. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry it. I believe finance is our first committee listed, so Counselor Gaffney, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. I will call a meeting of the Finance and Labor Relation Committee to order, and I'll note that Counselor BD has submitted regrets for this meeting. Item two, disclosure pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Seeing none. Item three, subcommittee minutes, there's some minutes attached. Item four, delegations, none scheduled. Item five, report of destination Stratford. 5.1, destination Stratford Q2 update. Could I get a motion from Counselor BD and Counselor Vazalakos to hear from Zach?
If I could note, that was Counselor Bunting, as Counselor BD is not in attendance.
I guess his name was still fresh in my mind. Sorry, Graham. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry it. Are you there, Zach? Madam clerk?
So through the chair, no, the CEO of Dusty Shover is not available.
Okay, then we will move ahead. Item six, report of the Stratford Economic Enterprise Development Corporation. Item 6.1, Stratford Economic Enterprise Development Corporation. Could I get a mover? Counselor Clifford and a seconder. Counselor Henderson to hear from economic development. All those in favor? Opposed, if any. Oh, I see the clerks waving at me.
So through the chair, the CEO of Miss River is also not on the line. The subcommittee recommendation is to receive the report for information and then to receive the 2020 annual report for information.
I guess that's, that's what we will do then. Counselor Clifford and Counselor Ritzman. All those in favor? Carrie, was there the same thing for item 5.1?
Through the chair, yes. If we could have a motion to receive the report out for information, that'd be great.
Okay, I just, I saw Counselor Burbak's hand there. Was there something you had?
Sorry, yeah, I wanted to make a comment on the Labor and Finance Committee report, but I, is that the one we're receiving right now? For information, or have we just gone past that? Sorry, from Invest Stratford, the Labor and Finance Committee report?
So through the chair, the motion to receive the Stratford Economic NRI Development Corporation has been moved, seconded, and carried. However, if you would like to ask questions, this would be a proper time, and then we can return to item 5.1 to receive a motion to receive the report.
Okay, sorry, I, yeah, I was a little mixed up on the order of things. So, this is labeled in mine, the Invest Stratford Update, July, but then it's called the Labor and Finance Committee Report, and it's dated August. But anyway, I had a question. And I'm wondering if somebody on Invest Stratford could answer. On page one, at the very bottom, it talks about a new investment attraction advisory committee started in May. I just was wondering if there was any details on that, who might be on that committee, and, and what's the, the purpose of it?
I will give a brief update. The CEO of Invest Stratford has asked a couple of local residents who come retired from the federal government. One being Roy Norton, the former Consul General for Canada in various US cities, and a former staff member at Foreign Affairs, as well as Deanna Horton, who is the former ambassador for Canada in Singapore, to provide some ideas with regard to foreign direct investment strategies, ideas that are there seeing from their time in the federal bureaucracy and as diplomats in different parts of the world that other communities were using to, of course, look at foreign direct investment. And for them to give some input into that as SOMA, the Southern Ontario Marketing Alliance, which SEDCO is part of, to get an idea so that we had more information taken to the table.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, your worship. So we'll go back to item 5.1. I had a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Carrie. Item seven, report of the manager of financial services. 7.1. Q2 operating budget variance report as at June 30th, 2021. Before I ask for a mover, well, I asked for a mover and a seconder. Counselor Clifford and Counselor Vazalakos. Is there any questions on that? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, that carries. Item eight, adjournment. Can I get a motion? Counselor Henderson and Counselor Burbak. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you, everyone.
I'd like to call the Planning and Heritage Meeting to order, if I may. Item number two, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interests or the general nature thereof? Seeing none. Item three, delegations, there are none scheduled. Item four, report of the manager of planning. And item 4.1 is modification of the draft approved plan of subdivision 31T18-001A, which are the addresses of 40, 48, 50, 60, 66, and 72 Daly Ave. And prior to moving on, I believe we're going to have Mr. Bannon give us a brief overview of the plan of subdivision. Mr. Bannon, are you available?
I am. I have a PowerPoint presentation I'm going to share with you. So in September of 2018, the city granted draft approval to the plan of subdivision.
The presentation isn't up.
No? Okay, sorry. Are you able to see it now?
Yep, perfect, thanks.
Thank you for letting me know. So in 2018 of September, the city granted draft approval to the plan of subdivision. The plan consisted of 10 singly detached dwellings on 0.4 hectares of land. The lands are located on the north side of Daly Avenue between St. Vincent Street and Birmingham. In 2019, applicant requests revisions to the draft approved plan to include an additional 0.2 hectares of land and to change a singly detached dwelling lots to duplex and semi-detached lots. The applicant also requested a resolution from council to permit for future minor variance applications on the subject lands. That resolution is no longer needed because the timeline has lapsed. The two-year timeframe has lapsed, and they are free to apply for minor variances if needed. Public meeting was held on March 9th, 2020 to discuss the revised draft plan, which included two singly detached dwelling lots, five duplex lots, and five semi-detached dwelling lots. Following that public meeting, the applicant has now requested further revisions to the draft plan of subdivision. And they want to modify the form of development along Worsley Street. The revised plan contains two singly detached, two duplex dwellings, and seven semi-detached lots on the same amount of land. In addition to the proposed lots, applicant is requesting easements to be established for stormwater management servicing and for the maintenance of the proposed retaining walls. The proposed lots are to be accessed from Worsley and Daly Avenue, and the frontage is ranged from 15 meters to 24 meters in width. I've included a sketch or a couple of plans that show what was presented at the original public meeting. The duplex dwellings are in green, semi-detached dwellings are in a light blue color. And the singly detached dwellings are shown in tan color. The revised draft plan, the subdivision, shows the semi-detached dwellings in a purple. The duplex dwellings are still in green, and again, a tan color is a singly detached dwellings. Semis and duplex dwellings are already permitted in the zone. An additional public meeting we felt was not required as the total number of units was not increasing after the previous public meeting. There's a great difference of approximately seven meters from Daly Avenue down to Worsley Street. And the surrounding land uses are a secondary school to the north, single detached dwellings to the east and the south, and duplex dwelling to the west. The provincial policy statement supports new housing, which officially uses the land, resources, infrastructure, and public services facilities away from impacts, lands impacted by hazards. Policies also support the use of active transportation and transit in areas where it exists. The proposed modification and draft plan subdivision provides development of a mix of residential uses that utilize the existing infrastructure. The lands promote active transportation because they're in close proximity to the educational and recreational facilities and relatively close to the downtown core and public transit. And the easements are being provided to provide proper servicing to the subject lands. The subject lands are located in heritage area, as identified in the official plan by, or they are not designated under Heritage Act or in a register of properties of cultural heritage or interest. Subject properties are located directly across from a property that is designated under Part IV of the Heritage Act. The applicant has completed a heritage impact assessment, which recommends that where construction activity occurs within 50 meters of the residence at 55 Daly Avenue. A vibration assessment needs to be completed to establish a baseline for vibration levels in advance of construction activities. The assessment also will determine what future controls are required to allow development on the subject lands. And implementation of the recommendations of that HIA are included in it as a draft condition of the approval. Opera Thames River Conservation has advised that they have no objection to the application. In association with the previous minor variance application, the applicant provided material to them that demonstrates safe access can be achieved. In our opinion, the proposed modification is consistent with provincial policy statement. The lands are designated as residential area in the land use on the Schedule E of the official plan and within the regulation limit. And is within the heritage area and heritage areas in Schedule E. The proposed modifications continue to encourage the development of underutilized parcels and contributes to a mix of housing densities within the city. Infilling policy of the, of the official plan encourage development that is compatible with and sensitive to the existing development in area. The character Daly Avenue and Worsley Street is primarily singly detached and converted dwellings. The addition of semi-detached and duplex lots is compatible with existing development in the area. Revised parcels do represent a modest increase in the density of the development. Many of the lots in the area frontages from 16 to 19 meters in range, but there are some lots that are eight and a half to 11 meters. Revised lots in Daly Avenue range from 15.7 meters to 22 meters with frontage. And on Worsley Street, their lots are 23.6 meters of frontage. Lot pattern is in keeping with existing lots in the area and conforms to the official plan. Any new buildings are required to meet the existing zoning regulations, and the building massing is already permitted in the zone. Other lots in the area on smaller parcels are able to functionally accommodate both a dwelling and a parking. And as expected, that the revised new lots can also meet the standard. And the revised plan of subdivision provides for infill that is in conformity with the official plan. The subject lands are located within the city of Stratford's built boundary. Official plan contains an intensification target requiring that 25% of residential growth occur within the built boundary between 2013 and 2033. This proposed development will contribute to the achievement of that intensification target. This proposed development will contribute to the achievement of that intensification target. A considerable portion of the land within the draft plan of subdivision boundaries is vacant. The request of modifications in the planned subdivision will permit residential uses that have a similar massing and building envelope as those that already exist on Daly and Worsley Avenue, Worsley Street. Existing zone permits minimum front yard depths allow new buildings to match the existing street wall. Filling this gap with buildings are committed with a similar height massing and setbacks as existing buildings will improve the character of the street scape and it's encouraged by the official plan. For servicing and infrastructure engineering services has stated that the properties on Daly Ave can be adequately serviced through proposed easements. Separate services for each of the proposed lots are being provided and the easements are sufficient size to accommodate the new services. They also requested initially the road widening on the Worsley Street would be required, but they have withdrew that request after considering that the nature of development along the street scape and the fact that it was rebuilt in the year two thousand using the existing road allowance width. They have, however, requested as a condition of approval that a work easement be established along the Worsley Street frontage in order to make any future reconstruction easier. As mentioned, Upper Thames River Conservation has reviewed the plans. A small portion of the lands are within the regulation limit. And is recommended, recommend, recommended that conditions of draft approval require the applicant to obtain a permit from the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority prior to final approval. The lands are zoned residential second density R two bracket one dash forty-seven zone and permits a range of low profile, low density housing, including semi-detached and duplex dwellings. The provisions of the existing zone allow for a minimum setback of five meters on Worsley, locked up to twenty-five meters, a maximum deck encroachment into your rear yard of three point five meters. Building height to be measured at average grade at the front yard setback for lots on Daly and Avenue in a specified design width of Worsley Street of twelve meters. The grading and topography does have a significant impact on how the subject lands developed. And it's because of the grading that the proposed drain connections from Daly Avenue lots are serviced, connected to services on Worsley Street via the prefer via permanent easement. The functional servicing letter submitted with application has been reviewed by engineering. An additional information is required to confirm some of the information, including the width of the easement. However, they believe these matters can be addressed through conditions of draft approval and detailed engineering drawing review. The recommended, recommended conditions of draft approval require the owner to submit the required additional information prior to the approval of the subdivision. Also, a recommendation of the condition, their condition will be that the whole subdivision is developed in one phase to, in order to prevent future erosion during construction. Detailed agency comments have been included in the report. A particular note is of the engineering comments that have been provided. The applicant has provided a resubmission in May and that that plan that has been resubmitted is still under review. Heritage Stratford has voiced some concerns with the application. They believe that the ten multifamily buildings in the area of predominantly single family dwellings are a significant infill and think that the heritage area should be assessed through the HIA. Also, a transportation impact study is not required through engineering services as the current road traffic does not warrant it. A pre-construction vibration assessment is also required and those recommendations in assessment must be accommodated in the design and construction of the subdivision. We have received various comments through circulation through the public meeting. And after the the report was completed, the majority of those comments can be addressed or can be are assessed through the various issues that have been shown on the screen. The damages to Daly Avenue and ongoing construction was the first concern. The subdivision agreement will include provisions to ensure that securities are provided that can be used to repair any damage to the public boulevard as a result of construction. And with any construction activity, there will always be some neighborhood disruption. The revised subdivision plan will result in the development eight new buildings on the subject lands. For stormwater management area residents were concerned with hard, additional hard surfaces on the land and the stormwater will impact other properties. The developer will be required to maintain stormwater within the plan of subdivision and ensure that the adjacent properties are not adversely affected. Conditions have been included in the recommendation that will ensure stormwater quantity is controlled. That temporary measures if required are to the satisfaction of the city and the lands are developed and graded in one phase and that the engineering standards for the plan of subdivision are achieved. For heritage, the existing city official plan policy requires that heritage impact assessment is completed to study the impact of the development adjacent to the designated heritage in heritage building. This has been completed and staff have included conditions in the recommendations to ensure the recommendations of the assessment are implemented. Official plan does not require a heritage impact assessment for infill development within a heritage area. For amenity and park space, the applicant is required to meet the separate requirements in the existing zone. That zone provides for adequate vanity rear yard space for each property that is to be developed. And the subject areas are within walking distance to many amenities found in the downtown core directly across from the public school site. As for overdevelopment next to the flood plain, this has been reviewed by Upper Thames River Conservation Authority. They have no objections to the plan that has been proposed and their concerns relating to safe access being provided are addressed through conditions of draft approval. They have no objection with the required requested revisions to the plan or with increasing density and proximity to the flood plain. Area residents are also concerned that the additional units will increase traffic and cause on-street parking issues. The zone that is existing provides provisions to require one parking space setback from the road allowance for each dwelling unit. And applicant has not requested any variances to reduce those parking setbacks. Applicant has noted that on the revised plan of subdivision to allow for existing for additional semi-detached dwellings on Worsley Street will allow for additional parking to be provided on the private property and not on the road allowance. Engineering has noted that a traffic impact study is only required when development is exceeding seventy-five peak hour trips. The proposed development is expected to generate less than ten trips during peak hours. And as a result, that traffic impact study was not required. They have not identified any additional traffic or parking related issues with the project. And Worsley and Daly Avenue are both local streets and still remain below the traffic volume capacity for both streets. Area residents are concerned with increasing density and the proposed new developments will not be compatible with existing area buildings. The proposed lots meet the minimum requirements of the existing zone and the resulting density can be accommodated in the area. The need for retaining walls and easement is a function of the topography of the subject land. Existing slope on the lands results in the need to provide retaining walls and to ensure that buildings can be safely constructed and stormwater management can be accommodated without impacting the adjacent properties. Easements provide for servicing and maintenance of the retaining walls. Area residents also express concerns with owner removing private trees on property. The city of Stratford has since implemented a private tree bylaw on June eighth of twenty twenty. The bylaw requires that any, requires permits to be obtained for the removal of any tree that measures the minimum diameter of thirty centimeters at the height one point three seven meters above ground level. Permit may require protection of trees that are to be retained or compensation for trees that are removed. If any trees in the road allowance are impacted by the development, the owner will be required to replace and provide payment for boulevard trees that will be removed as part of the development. The development has stated that additional trees will be planted along common rear lot lines of the lots that are being proposed and it would be the responsibility of the individual homeowners to maintain any landscape that is on private property. Six letters have been submitted after the completion of the planning heritage report. Those letters have been included as part of today's agenda and addenda. Staff are of the opinion that the revised recommend, recommended conditions of draft approval will ensure orderly development and appropriate services are installed to meet the needs of future residents. With recommended, recommended conditions, the proposed modifications to the existing draft plan of subdivision is consistent with the provincial policy statement, conforms to the official plan and considered good planning. Planning staff have reviewed the revised requested revisions to the plan of subdivision and they are of the opinion that the proposed subdivision is consistent with the provincial policy statement, conforms to the city's official plan. Application circulated to the public in regard for the response was had in the recommended plan and conditions of approval and the proposed plan of subdivision will result in sound land use planning that is considered appropriate for the development of the land. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you for listening to that longer presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Any questions from council? Counselor Henderson, dicing your hand? I'm sorry?
Yes, you did. I just want to make sure I have this correct. So in two thousand and nineteen, they wanted to build two singles, five duplexes and five semis. So that's twelve buildings, but seventeen units of people where people can live. Two twenty-one, what they're asking for is two singles, two duplexes, seven semis, so that's eleven buildings, so one less than before. And only thirteen places for people to live instead of seventeen. Have I got that right?
Mr. Bannon?
Yes, through the chair, for the most part, you do have it correct. I'll just clarify, it wasn't twenty eighteen that we, that the city granted draft approval of the plan of subdivision. In twenty nineteen, that's when they came back with revisions to include additional lands. And with that additional lands, we're looking at two singly detached lots, five duplex lots and five semis. Since then, they have now come back with further revisions after that public meeting. And now they're asking for the two singly detached lots, the two duplex lots and seven semi-detached dwelling lots.
Right.
So since the public meeting, they're asking for actually two less dwelling units than what was shown before. They had twenty-two in total and now they have twenty.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thank you again, Mr. Bannon. The next item is a motion that the delegations from the following persons regarding the draft approved plan subdivision, three one T one eight dash zero zero one A be heard. And those individuals are Caroline Baker, agent of the applicant, Patrick O'Rourke, and Bruce and Patricia Proctor. Proctor, I should say, I'm sorry. A motion for that moved by Counselor Seven, seconded by Counselor Basilakos. All in favor? And that's Carrie. And Ms. Baker, are you on the line?
I am, yes. Good afternoon to the committee. I'm assuming, can everybody hear me all right?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Well, I appreciate Mr. Bannon's presentation. He actually covered a lot of my speaking points with his comprehensive and thorough presentation. I think I just simply wanted to add that the draft plan of subdivision proposal that's before committee today that has been modified since the public meeting was to address those comments that we received from council, from staff and residents, particularly related to the Worsley Street lots. The application has reduced the overall number of dwelling units by two. And in doing that, what the development achieves is an increase in off-street parking for each of the Worsley lots. One of the concerns we heard was sufficient parking on Worsley, given that no on-street parking is permitted. As part of our submission with the new design, a maximum of four parking spaces, up to four parking spaces, could be accommodated on each of the semi-detached building lots. And again, this was to address some concerns about on-street parking. Since the public meeting, as Mr. Bannon noted, there also has been the completion of a heritage impact assessment, which was another comment raised by the public. And the third thing I would note is that the engineering has been taken to what I would consider more of a detailed design stage that you would typically see between draft plan approval and registration. And this was to ensure that the proposed servicing strategy and the accompanying required easements were appropriate and identified at this stage prior to approval. So I think I will leave it at that, but certainly here to answer any questions or be of any assistance that I can be to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Any questions from council? Counselor Clifford?
I was just going to ask a general question. Are the, are the proposed houses of a brick and are they compatible with the other houses in the area as far as, as far as the street scape is concerned?
Ms. Baker?
Through the committee chair, in terms of a requirement for the materials to be brick, that would have to be a recommendation or I guess a draft plan condition. In my planning opinion, and not everybody might agree, but I don't believe that necessarily all the dwelling units have to be entirely of brick to be compatible. The term compatible in land use planning means that there is no unacceptable adverse impact to surrounding properties. It doesn't necessarily mean the test of the same. And we can have slightly different architectural designs that can be compatible. And that would just be my opinion. Happy to answer any other questions in that regard.
Any other questions in council? Thank you, Ms. Baker. We will now move on to Mr. O'Rourke, Patrick O'Rourke, through the clerk, is Mr. O'Rourke available?
Through the chair, we are just waiting for Pepper to join the meeting. Pepper, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much and thank you for joining us today, Mr. O'Rourke. The floor is yours.
Thank you. We wrote to council earlier on, on this when we got the notice of consideration, arguing that this proposal is a significant change from what was the subject of the public meeting back in February twenty twenty. Law configurations have changed, the mix has changed. According to Ms. Baker, there are parts of it that address public concerns. But of course, nobody saw any of that. Nobody saw most of the information Mr. Bannon presented until the management report came out. And that was Friday, less than a working day ago. We argued then that in addition to the changes in the plan, basically, February twenty twenty was eighteen very long months ago and a lot has changed. And we believe it would be appropriate now that the plan has been changed, so that it will address public concerns, that there be another public hearing so the public can be made aware of those changes and give you their views. Having read, now read the management report over the course of a weekend, as I'm sure you all did, that view is reinforced. There is, I don't mean to be critical, but there are elements of public comments that are not adequately reflected and are glossed over in the report, traffic being perhaps the largest one. Because people's concern, particularly on Daly, is on-street parking. But apart from all of that, and Councilor Clifford touched on this issue, there is a provision that Mr. Bannon mentioned in the official plan. This area is in a, this street is in a heritage area. And while it's true that the official plan does not say a heritage impact assessment must be done, it does say the council will ensure that the inherent heritage qualities of the area are retained, restored, and ideally enhanced. The management report makes no reference to this, in effect. And it's not a surprise, there's no information in the report, no information in the presentation of what exactly is going to be built there. It just shows a bunch of bare lots and a zoning bylaw. And that may be okay on bare land in some areas of the city, but this is a heritage area. And your official plan says you will ensure that development isn't just compatible in the broad sense, in the planning sense, but in common sense retains, restores, and ideally enhances. And I, I am, I guess somewhat surprised that so little information is before you. You may recall that back in twenty eighteen, or some of you will, because I'm not sure all current counselors were there. When the ten. Lot draft approval, ten single-family draft approval was given. The applicant's agent had detailed elevation drawings, renderings. Counsel, both as committee and then a toll council, had relatively long discussion about front yard setbacks and garage sizes. You can't have that discussion now, because you don't know what's going to be built there. And similarly, in my humble opinion, it is impossible. For you to say that you will ensure that what is built there. Will retain, restore and enhance the heritage areas. You simply do not have that information. So I. You can't treat that part of the official plan as just a checkbox. It can be addressed simply by saying, oh, don't worry, it doesn't require heritage, heritage assessment. And everything will be fine somewhere down in the future. There are no conditions in the draft approval to deal with this. You are in effect hoping the developer will be the right thing. And in my considered, again, considered opinion, that's good, not good enough. This provision requires you to act, not just watch. Requires you to take steps to ensure, not just hope. We encourage you to at minimum send this back to a public meeting, so you know what the public thinks. Should require the applicant to give enough information to make an appropriate assessment. Or simply say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Any questions from council regarding Mr. O'Rourke's presentation? Seeing none, I'm going to ask the clerk if Bruce and or Patricia Proctor are on the line.
Through the chair, they are on the line. We are just waiting for them to connect. Bruce and Patricia, can you hear us?
Yes, hello.
Hi.
Thank you, and whenever you're ready, please go ahead.
We live at eighty Daly Street, and we're concerned about the development of the property immediately adjacent to ours on the shared property line. In our backyard, we have three very mature pine trees. And towards the shared property line is a slope. And I just have concerns about that being properly managed, so it doesn't harm the tree. How do I address that type of an issue?
I'm wondering if Mr. Bannon is on the line to speak to that.
I apologize if I I missed up in in order. Just thought I might be able to answer that question. One of the.
Thank you, Ms. Baker, I'm sorry.
No, thank you. Through the chair, one of the conditions of draft plan approval is a vegetation management plan and overview. And that will require the assessment of all vegetation that's either. On property line, on property, or where the canopy of the tree extends over to the development property. That would require those trees to be tagged, surveyed. And a plan prepared by either an arborist or a certified landscape architect. To ensure that those trees that are off-site but with a canopy over the property line are protected during the construction. That plan is required to be submitted to the city for review and approval prior to any works being undertaken.
So with regards to the slope area then, is it's not as big of a slope as going from Daly to Worsley, but it does go kind of sideways. Is that part of the retaining wall plan as well?
Ms. Baker?
Through the committee chair, the the majority of retaining wall work that needs to be undertaken on the site is internal. In and around the existing single detached dwellings that are being maintained on the property.
So this wouldn't be classified as that that big of a slope, like it's a small slope, but if somebody was digging along there, they would erode the soil from around the tree root ball. Is that part of the tree protection or part of the some kind of retaining system protection?
That would be through the chair, I apologize. That would be through the vegetation management plan. The expert would set out the implementation measures to protect both. The tree and its root zone during any grading works.
Okay, thank you very much.
No, it's Bruce here. I just have one quick question, because a lot of this was covered in the presentation. I I do agree with the previous talker a little bit about the heritage. I mean, we've only been here for eighteen months. And so we're just kind of digging more into this scenario that's right beside us. But the general question, I'm not sure who could answer that. There's. Adjacent to us on seventy-two Daly, there's currently a. A semi, a rental semi at the front on the Daly side. And nothing yet on the Worsley side. Is seventy-two Daly, that property, is that going to be torn down and rebuilt, or is that just going to be maintained as is?
Mr. Bannon?
Through the chair, our understanding is that property is going to be maintained as it is at seventy-two Daly Avenue. The applicant has told us in the past that that building will be retained and it's not to be demolished.
Okay, fair enough. The, I assume then that the the one beside that, which is a very nice bed and breakfast, that's remaining as well, correct?
Mr. Bannon?
Again, through the chair, yes, that's the intention. That's what our applicant has told us and the owner has told us is those two buildings would be maintained. In fact, there's a total of three buildings on Daly Avenue. The one that's on the far east on Daly Avenue is also a single, sorry duplex dwelling, and that is also intended to be retained.
Okay, that's great. Thanks very much, guys. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Bruce and Patricia. Moving forward, the next item is a motion that the correspondence of the following persons regarding. Draft approved plan subdivision of three, one, T, one, eight, dash, zero, zero, one, A, be received for information. Anne and Mary Anna Buchanan. Dr. Richard Wood and Mary Margaret Walton, Marion de Groot Isma, Michael, Mike Isma, and as per the addendum. Which was received today, we will add the following names, Janet and Barry McCarthy. Patrick and Mary O'Rourke and Jenny Nicholson. So a mover for that? Let's move by Counselor Vassalakos, second by Counselor Verbach. Questions? Counselor Gaffey, do you have a question? No, I will call the question then. All in favor? And that's passed. Next item is the staff recommendation as per the plan of subdivision. Is there a? There is a staff recommendation which Mr. Bannon thoroughly went through. Is there a mover for that? Counselor Clifford will move. Counselor?
Actually, I actually, I have, I have a question of our planner before, if you don't mind.
Yes, by by.
I was just going to ask our planner, how do, how do we know it's going to retain and enhance the heritage area without elevations? And without some type of drawing to what proposed is there? Because we've had incidents. In town where buildings have been built that are certainly inappropriate, at least in my opinion, are inappropriate for the area. Is there any chance before we approve this that we can have some elevations and what kind of materials? Are going to be on, like on these proposed buildings?
Thank you, Counselor Clifford. I'll turn it over to Ms. Bridge or Mr. Bannon.
Through the chair, I can answer those questions, I believe. So existing zoning is in place on the property, so the existing zone does allow for singly attached dwellings. It does allow for duplex dwellings and semi-detached dwellings. So these things were all addressed with the original plan of subdivision, which included the zone change at the time, and that's why they included. A lot of those elevations to show that when they rezone those lands, that they're rezoning those lands to compatible uses. So within that heritage area, the intention is that we're regulating the. The density and the types of dwellings through the zone. And since the zoning is already in place for each of those permitted uses. Then is expected that what will be built is something that's going to be compatible with area. That's how they reach the compatibility. Questioning how they obtain that and achieve that compatibility is through the zone. It's not through imposing other development restrictions on the plan of subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Ms. Baker, do I see your hand before I go back to council?
Yes, if appropriate, I was just going to suggest to address Counselor Clifford's comments and speaking with the owner. They would be comfortable if planning staff deem it appropriate to include a condition that the dwellings be constructed in brick. They are not opposed to that concept, if that would give committee a bit more comfort in terms of the design of the buildings that could be constructed.
Thank you. Counselor Vassalakos?
I just had a comment that is sort of related, like I think one of the things that we had talked about a number of years ago. And it was parked for a while was infill, urban infill design guidelines that could be developed both for heritage areas, but I would argue for. Anywhere in the city that has a mature neighborhood. I think all neighborhoods, whether they're deemed heritage or not, do have. Value in terms of their, how infill happens in those, and and some of those design guidelines would actually help to address. What Counselor Clifford is talking about. And and I think this, that would be like a really, that would help go a long way to alleviate some of the concerns with the neighbors on the hub in terms of. Of what would be, what would be aesthetics of what is going into this infill. And I know that at one point there was talk about creating, I don't know, maybe staff could talk to us about creating some. Infill design guidelines for these low-rise housing, and I don't know if that's something we've done, but I think it's. I'm going to bring it up again, but I think it's something we're going to do as we start to see more infill and more infill intensification in our neighborhoods.
Thank you, Counselor Vassalakos. Mr. Bannon or Ms. Bridge, do you want to address that comment?
As through the chair to Counselor Vassalakos, certainly that's something that staff can look into. In addition. You may recall when staff brought forward. The report to initiate the review of the official plan, Counselor Ingram asked that a review of the heritage area policies be included in that review of the official plan. So I think as part of that review of the heritage area policies, we can also look at appropriate urban design standards for infilling in those areas.
And. I think it also, I think though, it doesn't just have to be heritage areas. I would, again, I would argue that even neighborhoods like mine that wouldn't be heritage. Have value in in how infill is done in those as well.
Thank you, Counselor Vassalakos. Counselor Verbach and then Counselor Seven?
Thank you. Yeah, my comments were actually very similar to Counselor Vassalakos, and as Mr. O'Rourke said, i- if we're to ensure the character of the streetscape. We need to have some policies and and guidelines in place so that we can ensure we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Seven?
Thank you. I guess just further to Counselor Clifford's comments, are we, is it within council's scope? To have something before us, like subject to the approval of council of the final sort of. Design, or is that something that is usually done by staff that we could in this case make condition upon council approval? I'm just wondering.
And and I will turn that perhaps back to the manager of planning?
Through the chair, so for single detached dwellings, they currently or semi-detached or duplex dwellings, they currently don't go through. Site plan approval, so after the lots are created through the plan of subdivision. They can go straight to building permit, and there isn't necessarily a review at the staff level of the design or building materials, at least from a planning perspective.
Okay, thank you. And is that something that in this case, or is it in council's sort of? I don't know, council's sort of authority to to have that final say before before things move ahead in this case?
Well, we can, you know, you are certainly at liberty to make a a motion, Counselor Seven. Counts, I'll go to, I'll let Counselor Seven and then go back to Counselor Henderson. Anything to add, Counselor Seven?
I guess I'll, yeah, I would propose to add that to one of the conditions that council would have the final sort of approval, just to. Just to.
Counselor Henderson, and then perhaps I'll I'll go to the clerk as well for.
I just want clarification on that motion. Does that mean now that? Any subdivision, any house changes or any being built are now going to go through the same thing, or are we just going to treat this particular area different? And I have strong concerns about that.
I'm going to go to the clerk for her thoughts with regards to process here and protocol, and then I'll go to Counselor Vassalakos.
So through the chair, it's my understanding a motion has not been made to date. On the draft plan of subdivision, any member of council is welcome to make a motion at this time, and this is just committee. It would still need to go through to council. However, I would refer to our manager of planning to determine whether that condition would be an appropriate addition.
Thank you. Counselor Vassalakos?
I was just going to ask the same question. I mean, in in terms of, I I am not. Really in favor of one-off requirements for single, this is why I go back to, I really think we need something like a urban design guideline document that then could be. Appropriately applied to all applications and not just be picking and choosing when we choose to to use that prerogative, but I also don't know whether it's. Within our authority to ask for, you know, site plan review of of a single application as opposed to all applications. So I would, I would be very uncomfortable with that policy around that.
Thank you, Counselor Vassalakos. So I go back to the manager of planning. Would you like to add anything with regards to those comments?
Through the chair, I think if council wishes to proceed with requesting site plan approval for the the lots within this development or. Review of the elevations for the building permit, then. That staff should likely consult with the city solicitor to make sure that we have the authority to do that and to make sure that a process could be established, that that review is done. In accordance with the timelines prescribed under the Planning Act and the Building Code.
Thank you. Ms. Bridge, Counselor Seven?
Thank you. I just wanted to, so I guess my my rationale to combine it is. Is we do quite often see sort of site plans and we do, they do come to council quite often and. And, you know, we wouldn't be doing this for single homes, because in this case, it's just my feeling that this is almost. It's almost a mini subdivision that's coming forward to us, and so I feel like it's it's making such an impact on the neighborhood. That it's going into as opposed to if it were just one or two houses being built. I think that that to me is the difference here, and I think. I think it would just. Feel personally for for a little more diligence, I think, and and I would. I would certainly make a referral motion for the recommendation to refer with the city solicitor to see if that is in our authority.
And is there a second or for that referral motion? Counselor Clifford will second that. Further discussion or comments? Madam Clerk?
Through the chair, on a referral motion, there is no discretion permitted.
Thank you. So I will call the question then on the referral motion by Counselor Seven and second by Counselor Clifford. All in favor? Just keep your hands, if you have your hands, one, two, three, four, five, and opposed. And we have two opposed, so that referral motion is carried. Thank you. Moving forward, the next item is a motion to adjourn. Moved by counsel, did you have a comment, Counselor Vassalakos?
Yes, if I may, we hadn't, we keep playing around with the urban design guidelines and never actually make a formal. Motion for it, and 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 the manager planner did bring up the fact that we have a couple. Motions already on on heritage, but if I may, at this time, I'd like to refer to staff to come back with urban. Design guidelines for infill of low-rise or like residential housing to come back. or like residential housing to come back to council.
Thank you.
And, and if I may, City of Ottawa has, City of Ottawa is a really good example that I've been looking at, and it sort of fits what I'm looking for.
And a second or for that, Counsel Burback? And I'm going to go back to the clerk. Did you, were you able to capture most of that?
Through the chair, yes.
Thank you. For, I will call the question on that referral motion. All in favor? And that's carried. All right, if there's nothing further, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. It's moved by Counsel Burback, second by Counsel Clifford. All in favor? Thank you. More adjourned. Council reconvene, I'll turn it over to clerk.
Item fifteen point one is declarations of temporary interest. Are there any declarations of temporary interest made, made outstanding, committee to be restated?
Seeing none.
Item fifteen point two is reading up the bylaws, and there is one bylaw listed for consideration, and that is the confirmatory bylaw.
Counsel Vassalakos and Counsel Burback will move adoption of the confirmatory bylaw eleven point seven. First and second reading. All those in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried. Third and final is Counsel Gaffney, Counsel Seven, moving that eleven seven, the confirmatory bylaw. Be read a third and final time. All those in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried. A motion to adjourn this afternoon's proceedings. Counsel Ritzma, Counsel Bunting. All those in favor? Opposed, any? And that's carried. Thank you.